Good evening, welcome to Peoria City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, June 18th. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Edwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlott.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Thank you, this is the final call to Smith Speaker, request forms that can be found in the lobby, fill them out, give them to the clerk, we'll call upon you at the appropriate time. First item up is the consent agenda, consent agenda, are all items listed with a C, they're considered to be routine, or they've been previously reviewed by the city council, they will be enacted by one motion unless a council member requests one to be removed. Do we have any requests?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to remove six C and seven C.
Any other requests?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove nine C.
Nine C, okay. Any other requests? Hearing none, then would you please, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of six, seven, and nine C.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Patana, seconded by Mr. Leoni, please vote, clerk will record the vote. Thank you, Agent Adams. Six C, Contract Amendment, Populous Incorporated, Peoria Sports Complex Improvements, Phase Two, A-Third Avenue and Stadium Way.
Yes, I'm Mayor and Council, Andy Granger, our engineering director, I'll make the presentation on these two.
Thank you Carl, Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to take these both at the same time if you don't mind, they're related, they're both related to the, both items six C and seven C are both related to the Phase Two of the Sports Complex Improvements Agreement.
Okay, for people at home don't have the agenda, seven C is Contract Amendment, Mortenson Construction, Peoria Sports Complex Improvements, Phase Two, A-Third Avenue and Stadium Way.
Thank you.
Go for it.
As I said, item six C and seven C are both related to the Phase Two of the Sports Complex Improvements Agreement, which is the stadium improvements portion of our Sports Complex Improvements that the city entered into with the Padres and the Mariners last year as part of the negotiations for a new 20-year lease agreement with the teams. With that, I'd just, to give you a general overview of the presentation, we'll start with the Phase Two project overview, what the project entails, the budget for Phase Two, the project schedule, and then staff recommendation for items six C and seven The Sports Complex Improvements Agreement requires or obligates the city to design and construct stadium improvements in the amount of approximately $7 million to be completed in the years 2014 and 2015 timeframe. The city has been meeting with the teams over the past six months to discuss mutual interest between the teams and the city on stadium improvements, and that's a part of the agreement, is for us to have mutual agreement between the teams and the city for those stadium improvements. The design scope and fees are now being obtained for the broader scope of improvements that address each party's interest, and with that, we anticipate that the scope and fees will be finalized in late July and early August in order to enter into a contract at that time. Some of the stadium improvements that are being contemplated include stadium entry improvements such as facade improvements, entryway hardscape and box office improvements to improve the access to the stadium, as well as a new souvenir store. Also looks at, we'll look at fixed seating enhancements, including additional fixed seating at the field level and possible suite level reconfiguration or a reconfig, or a refresh of the existing suites. In addition, we'll look at social seating enhancements, right now the stadium does not have any fixed social seating enhancements, most of the valley, other spring training facilities do have social seating, and it's something that a lot of our major companies look for, so this will provide a variety of group and event seating opportunities if we go forward with this portion of the project. And then we're also looking at improving our outfield berm experience, that will include shade canopies along the berm areas and the back of the berms, wider walkways in the back of the berms and around the berm area, and a kids interactive zone to improve our fan The budget, the overall budget for the project as laid out in the Sports Complex Improvements Agreement is approximately $7 million. Item six C and seven C entail $1.2 million of that, and that's for the final design as well as the pre-construction services that we need to go forward with so that we can outline and detail what those final improvements will be and the costs associated with those between the teams and the city. There's other ancillary costs, and then the construction is actual, the actual construction budget is five point, approximately $5.4 million. As you know, right now we're in the process of constructing the Phase One improvements, which is the clubhouse improvements for both the Mariners and the Padres, we anticipate that to be done before spring training of 2014. We're in the process of developing the scope and fee, which is this pertains to these two items. We anticipate some of those stadium improvements, the more straightforward improvements to be started after the spring training of 2014, but some of the more complex improvements will have to be probably delayed because of the design complexity of them until after 2015 we will start those improvements. So with that, what we are requesting tonight is for the council to authorize the city manager to execute contracts with both Populous, which is item six C, and then a not-to-exceed amount of $1 million, for their architectural services to go forward with the design concepts and final design for the stadium improvements, as well as the pre-construction services for Mortenson Construction in the amount of not to exceed $200,000.
Questions?
With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Mr. Rivera.
Thank you Mayor. Mr. Granger, why weren't these two contracts part of the original big contract?
The original big contract was for the clubhouse improvements, and the way that we outlined this project was for the clubhouse improvements to go first, and we did not know at that time, and we still don't know what the stadium improvements, final, the final amenities will be for the stadium improvements, we're still working with the teams on that. So, a year ago when we did the original final design for the clubhouse improvements, we didn't want to, I think we were putting the cart before the horse if we negotiated the scope and fee for the Phase Two portion also.
So at this point, we don't know what the improvements are going to be at the stadium?
We don't know the specificity of them, but we're getting very close to outlining those. The teams have looked and asked for more detail on some of the, what we've outlined here in the presentation tonight, these are what has come out of those, the last six months of meetings, so we're getting very close to what we think are acceptable amenities and improvements from both the city standpoint as well as a team standpoint, but the teams want some further refinement to some of those amenities before we go forward with final design.
Lastly, so there's going to be additional costs?
Well, our budget is $7 million, and this is what we had anticipated, this is kind of the preliminary designer, if you'd call it, the design concept report portion of the project, to further refine those amenities before we go forward with final design, and that's what we're going to do this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Hearing none, we will vote on these separately. First item is six C, Contract Amendment, Populous Incorporated, Peoria Sports Complex Improvements, Phase Two, A-Third Avenue and Stadium Way, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Edwards, please vote, clerk will record the vote. Next item is seven C, Contract Amendment, Mortenson Construction, Peoria Sports Complex Improvements, Phase Two, A-Third Avenue and Stadium Way, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Edwards, please vote, clerk will record the Agent Adams, thank you very much. Next up is nine C, Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment, Regional Public Transportation Authority, Americans with Disabilities Act, Paratransit Service. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you Mayor, I just asked if staff could do a report. Mahir Hazyin from our Public Works and Utilities Department will make the brief presentation.
Thank you.
Wait for the mic to come on. All right. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Mahir Hazyin, Deputy Public Works Utilities Director. Just a little overview about the Peoria Transit Service. Peoria provides paratransit service, it's called curb-to-curb on demand through the Dial-A-Ride program. The program provides services for the general public, individuals with disabilities, as well as senior citizen. We operate within the city limit, but we also coordinate with the regions and to do transferring at the various city limits. In addition, we do operate a Dial-A-Ride Plus program, which provides direct service to three medical facilities that are located just outside the city service or city limits, and those are the Boswell Banner, Thunderbird Banner, and Arrowhead Facility. This basically eliminates the need for an individual to have to transfer that last mile out of the area. For the ADA service area, which is generally three-quarters of a mile that runs along on either side of any fixed route, so for example Route 106 that runs along Peoria Avenue, anywhere within three-quarters of a mile of that route is considered an ADA service area. That area generally operates any time between 4:30 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, as well as 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, and those hours really depend on the actual hours of the route, so we generally start within 30 minutes prior to the beginning of the route and 30 minutes after the route. For other areas within the city, our service hours are from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Currently, our rates are $3 for general public, $2 for individuals with disability, and a dollar for senior citizen. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any further questions you have on Dial-A-Ride Transit.
Thank you very much, questions?
Yes. Are we looking at kind of coordinating more with our PTA, and I know our PTA has taken over service for the East Valley, the city still pay, but there, people can go from one city to another city much more easily than we can.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Ames, as you know, sir, the city of Peoria is part of the region, and we do coordinate with them. There is an existing contract called the Northwest Valley Dial-A-Ride that we do participate in, we utilize it in kind of more of a hybrid model, in other words, we provide some of the service, and then we utilize the contract for other parts. We're continually working with our region partners to look for opportunities to enhance the service and to provide the service at the cheapest possible price that we can while still keeping the quality of the service at the highest possible.
And we've been getting an increase in Americans with Disabilities Act users, isn't that correct, since we kind of reversed the fee structure and...
Yes, sir.
...make it less expensive for them, and that's a savings for the city, right, because of federal reimbursement?
Yes, sir, the city of Peoria does receive reimbursement for every individual that we provide service to that is certified ADA. A couple of years ago, Valley Metro/RPTA, the Regional Public Transit Authority, had built a mobility center which is off of 44th Street in Washington. The city partnered up with them, and we actually provide direct ride via cab from their house to the center to get them certified. We have been promoting individuals who are qualified to go ahead and get certified, because the more individuals who are certified that we provide service to, we do get direct reimbursement for those services.
And that could be a substantial amount, correct?
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, in the item tonight, that could be as much as $208,000, and that's been steadily increasing because we've been promoting the program for individuals who are qualified, just for some reason have not gone down and gone through the process to get certified.
Yeah, and I know you serve on the management board, so...
Yes, sir, as you just did, I just completed my 18-month assignment, but now I'm serving on the MAG Transit Authority as their vice chair.
I've been the chair of that board, but a lot of the work is done in the management committee, and I know you're going to keep making it improvements that'll be good for citizens in Peoria, correct?
Citizens of Peoria as well as the region.
With the larger entity involved, the county, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Carlott, seconded by Mr. Ames, this is nine C, Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment, Regional Public Transportation Authority, Americans with Disabilities Act, Paratransit Service. Please vote, clerk will record the vote. Agent Adams, thank you very much. Next is New Business, 23R, Reconsideration of Lease Amendment, Theater Works. For the benefit of the public, I need to explain how this will work. Some, with this, we can only reconsider this vote if someone who voted, since the nose carried the day last time, if one of the nose requests that we bring this back for reconsideration. Any member of the council can then second that motion, we will vote on just that motion, and then we would vote on any changes. Is that clear? No. This is 23R, Reconsideration Lease Agreement Amendment, Theater Works, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Could I have a second?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, reconsideration of Lease Agreement Amendment, Theater Works, please, do you want to make a comment?
No.
Okay. Please vote, clerk will record the vote.
Yeah, I think we're continuing to have some problems with our voting system.
Want you to poll the council?
I'll poll the council. Councilmember Ames?
No.
Councilmember Patana?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlott? Yes. Councilmember Leoni?
No.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Now we, all right, now we can, Mr. Edwards, you have a motion to make.
I'd like to have a report by staff.
Yeah, General and Deputy City Manager will make a brief staff report.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before you then is to consider a proposed amendment to the lease agreement that the city has with Theater Works, just to give a quick recap of some discussion we had, very similar to the presentation we had had on June 4th. The Center for Performing Arts, located just right down the street here, is a city-owned facility, and the city does pay the debt service on that, there was several different contributions to that, including from Theater Works, the city, but the city is incurring much of that cost through a financing that was undertaken several years ago. The agreement currently with the city and Theater Works is that Theater Works serves as what's called the master tenant of the facility, so not only do they serve for the programming and operation, but also maintain the facility as well, and incur much of the cost, including utility costs, facility maintenance costs, and the like. There is a facility lease charge, a symbolic lease charge to Theater Works for $1 a year. So just a recap of some of the recent discussions and activity that the city has had with Theater Works. In March of 2012, the city council directed staff to have discussions with Theater Works' leadership on a number of different items, including, as you can see, collaboration on different events and programming, some different city programming uses, some of the issues in the facility such as storage, maintenance, and replacement, and also talk about some of the financial requirements that are necessary long-term as we continue the arrangement. On June 4th, the staff did bring forward a recommendation to amend the existing contract, that was not approved, and so as of now, we have a reconsideration on the table. So, just a real quick recap, Theater Works about a couple of months ago brought forth an interest in helping to address some of their immediate financial challenges, and that included to seek funding from the city for $200,000 one time, immediately, to help support some of their existing financing requirements, and then an additional $150,000 that would be available in fiscal year 2014. In June 4th, on June 4th, in the initial discussions that we had on this, staff had brought forward a recommendation to support that funding, but also to include some of the following conditions, and that would include increasing the number of days the city has access to the Center for Performing Arts from 12 to 20 days, also to collaborate on items such as event participation. We looked to have Theater Works increase the amount of program that they had in such areas as what we call series events, and so that would be such things as lecture series, comedy series, music, and the like. And then also to provide, and I think importantly, periodic updates on their financial condition and their operational situation, and then also to continue their support of special populations, whether that be senior populations, the developmentally disabled, or the series of youth-related programming that they do. When that was put forward on June 4th, there was a discussion on it, that was brought forward by councilmembers Edwards and Patana, in regard to having some other checks and balances in place in addition to what we had seen here, and especially holding to some of the funding that was being recommended, in particular $150,000 that was identified in fiscal year 2014, to have that really brought forward after a review of one of these bi-monthly events where Theater Works would then present to staff where the status is on their finances, how the programming is going, and some of the other metrics that were in place. It should be noted that was not put forward, though, in the motion that was brought forward, and that motion did fail at that point. I did want to make one quick clarification to the amendment, and I apologize for the Scribner's error, in that one of the items that was a stipulation that was identified in the original proposed was to include a listing out of the minutes that Theater Works would have with their board meeting, that should say the approved minutes, we would like something that the board obviously has approved before that's brought forward, but other than that, there's no change to the proposed amendment that would be brought forward here at this point. So with that, the staff recommendation would be to go ahead with the proposed amendment to the lease agreement with the following conditions that we had identified, and then to identify $200,000 that would be available immediately, but that the $150,000 would be available one time in 2014, following a review, first by staff and then to council at the first meeting in October, and then that a budget amendment could be offered by the city council at that time. The reason that we're making this adjustment is after hearing the council's feedback, on June 4th, staff felt that this would be something that was certainly appropriate from our side, in discussions with Theater Works, they felt that this is something that they would be able to accommodate as well. With that, I'll address any other questions to the motion at hand.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you Mayor, I have a couple of questions, Jeff, can you go back one slide? So, upon the $200,000 being released immediately, and we have the $150,000 in next fiscal year, the timeframe for the subsequent reviews is, is it monthly? Is it...
Yes, sir, I think, what we were anticipating is that we would have bi-monthly reviews, so what would occur would be, a bi-monthly review would occur if, July 1st, August 10th, so in September, we would have, staff would have a bi-monthly review with the Theater Works leadership to review all of these different aspects of their programming, their financial status and standing, and other aspects that are impacting them going forward. Based off of that information, staff then would report back to the city council at their first meeting in October.
So if they were not meeting their benchmarks prior to the September review, you would be having discussions with Theater Works, basically saying you're not measuring up to what the expectations were, what are you doing to resolve that, and you're in jeopardy of not getting the additional $150 funding?
Yes, sir, that would be, the intent would be that we would review with Theater Works where they are on their metrics that are identified, and indeed, if they are not establishing those benchmarks, staff would bring that forward to you with council, most likely with a recommendation to hold off on that based off of your direction on this.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to take staff's recommendation for the proposal for the $200,000 immediately, and then the $150,000 subsequent to reviews being carried out by staff and then brought back to council for the additional release of funds, if, you know, if and when that's necessary.
Any second?
Seven.
Discussion? Yeah, just a second. Okay. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you Mayor. Before I start, I have a couple of points that I want to clarify. I support the theater. This past week, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Shea and talk about ideas of how we can work together going forward. And I think the record is clear that the city of Peoria, this council supports the theater. I want to talk about what's in place currently. The theater has a 20-year lease for only a dollar per year since 2007. Taxpayer pays approximately $85,000 a year in in-kind support for the building, maintenance, and landscape services. Estimated in-kind services provided by the taxpayer since the lease agreement has been in place is approximately $400,000 to $450,000. Taxpayer has paid approximately $346,000 in cash support since 2008. The estimated total contribution by the taxpayer in support of Theater Works has been approximately between $750,000 and $800,000. The taxpayers do support the arts through our half-cent tax, various city awards, I mean, awarded art and cultural grants, and lease agreements with both Theater Works and Broadway Theater. And the city does support the, individual councilmembers and the mayor, support the theater via district funds. Now, I think this is the big question, not whether this council or myself supports the theater, because I support the theater, the question is, is the business model in place sustainable? I believe that the model is not sustainable, and I also believe staff has made that observation, and it's supported by the fact that the theater is coming to the council asking for financial support. In addition, our staff has said that more money will be needed going forward by the Now the question has to be asked, what is the responsibility of the decision-makers at Theater Works, and what does a taxpayer want the council to do on their behalf to ensure that there's a viable and flourishing arts tenant who provides programs for the community that are, that are high-quality and sustainable? Options for the council to consider is provide support in addition to what has already been given, which is a short-term solution. As we've been told by our staff that the theater, there's a possibility the theater might come to the city council requesting more funds, or look at alternative, alternative long-term solution that will ensure the viability of a sustainable arts tenant on behalf of the taxpayer. Lastly, I want to talk about the impacts of the downtown. The downtown area has been in need of revitalization for many years. The theater has been in the city since 2007, and the downtown is still suffering. So there is truly a correlation between Theater Works leaving as a tenant and the Performing Arts Center going dark and the impact to downtown. First, the council will now choose to leave the Performing Arts Center dark, and there would be a lot of opportunities, either in-house or external tenants, to utilize, to utilize the building. Secondly, a theater is not singularly going to revitalize an old downtown, it is much more complex than that. Finally, there's been questions, or some of my colleagues have been questioning my commitment to the Acacia District, to the downtown, and I work extremely hard through partnerships and organizations who offer grant opportunities to revitalize the downtown. I just don't wait for staff to offer ideas, I'm dedicating my own time during the week, during the weekend, and working with partners to try to bring life into our downtown. So with that said, I support the theater, I look forward to working with Mr. Shea and offering anything I can do to make the performing arts the best theater in the valley, but in a time where our citizens are suffering, we have a good deal in place, and we don't know what the costs are going to be for the contracts for our first responders, and ask me, I don't think it's the right approach to commit the city council to supporting this contribution of $350,000. And with that said, I will be voting no on this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Leoni.
Yeah, thank you Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment, a motion to the amendment, if I could. You know, the first thing I want to say is that Theater Works is a great thing. I was here in 1999 when we were talking about it. They were talking about this Theater Works back in 1999. They were talking about this Theater Works back in 1994, when you had all the old-time councilmen here, like Johnny Osuna and Fred Galliotto, and Ella McCullough, and Pat Dennis, and Keegan was the one who pushed it. So we all support it, and I do support it today. The money, we support every year, and every year we give them money, and we give them money. There's a lot of projects in Peoria, in my district, and all the other districts that we could use that money for. So my proposal is if we can get it through, that the city will be responsible for the building. We'll take the utilities and all the buildings and everything to do with the replacements. We will take care of the building, the electricity, if it has gas, water, we will pay all those bills. And those bills probably come to maybe $140,000 every year. Also, I'd be willing, in my proposal, I'd be willing to give them $150,000 to pay their credit line, because it has to be paid off in 30 days. So that'd be a total of $150,000, and I guess they owe another $10,000 on utilities. So it'd be $160,000 I'd be willing to give to Theater Works. And also, I'd be willing to support the $140,000 a year to maintain the building. Also, on this agreement, that I want to make sure that Theater Works doesn't come back to the city council for more money every year, like they have. And every year they come back for money, and every year we give it to them. So that's one of my proposals. The other proposal is that we get to use the building, I think it's 20 days a year. I think it's in the proposal. So that would be my proposal, is to pay off what they owe is $160,000, then we'll just maintain, we'll take over the building and pay the $140,000, and Don Shea can run the building inside with dollar shows and everything else, and I think that he's doing a great job on that, and that's what'd be my proposal. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let me see if I understand your proposal before I ask for a second. I had one question. The $150,000 for utilities and the building maintenance, is that an annual thing you're going to give them?
Yeah.
Or just a one-time?
Yeah, $140,000 in a year.
Every year?
Yeah.
Okay. So if I understand right, what you're suggesting as an alternative motion is that we reduce the $200,000 to $160,000, we still give them $140,000 rather than $150,000? Is that correct?
It's $140,000 a year to maintain the building.
Right.
And to pay off...
Their debt, $160,000.
To pay off their debt they have with Wells Fargo, and I guess they owe another, it's $150,000, and I guess they owe $10,000 for utility. And I don't know if that's a $10,000 that's supposed to go to us or not, but that comes to about $160,000. Am I right, Jeff?
Mayor and council, so our understanding, just anecdotally with discussions with Theater Works, is that there is a known $150,000 line of credit due to Wells Fargo by Theater Works in the next 30 days. There's additional other ancillary costs, including utilities, costs that's around the $10,000. So correct, Mr. Leone, that we are aware of, there is approximately $160,000 that would be necessary immediately. There might be additional costs that Theater Works would have, but those are what we know of.
And the annual is $140,000 a year?
Mayor and council, yes. If the city were to assume utility costs, water costs, electricity, building maintenance and custodial, as I understand it, the known, I think the estimate would be approximately $140,000 net. Again, the city does already afford approximately $80,000 in its existing budget to help support that. So yes, $140,000 would be pretty close to an estimate that the city would have for assuming that cost. That would be on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat this one more time. That your motion is to give them roughly $160,000 to clear their credit debt, $140,000 annually for the building, electricity and everything else?
Yeah, right.
So essentially, what you're doing is you're going to reduce the one-time payment by 10, but make it ongoing, and you're going to take the $200,000 and knock it down to $160,000. Okay, that is the motion. Is there a second?
I'm seconding this item for discussion purposes only.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. We will deal with the proposed amendment first. Questions and comments on it?
This is Carl's.
Yeah.
I'm going to have an amendment also, but that'll come later, right?
Pardon me?
I'm going to have an amendment also.
Well, we'll deal with you after we deal with this one.
Mayor, my question is, there, Mr. Leone, there are 14 years left on the lease.
Mr. Time?
Councilmember Rivera, I believe that's right. I will check, but yes, I believe that's right.
Okay. So you're saying $160,000 for this year and $140,000 for the next 16 years?
Yeah.
$140,000 annual, every year.
For 16 years.
For the next 14 years, yeah.
For the life of the lease.
Yeah. But they won't be coming back for any money.
Okay.
The other way, they didn't come back, but this way here, they can't.
Are there questions or comments on the proposed amendment?
Yeah, that 1.4, that's 1.4 million pushes like 1.8 million that we would be approving to pay to Theater Works. And that's a lot more than the current proposal that we're looking at.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing no request for comments, we want to vote now on the amendment. The amendment, I'll repeat it one more time, is that the city would be responsible for providing them with $140,000 a year for the life of the lease, and a one-time $160,000 to clear their debt, and that they won't return for more money, for more money request. That's the motion.
At least we get 20 days to use the hall.
Okay, in 20 days, use the hall. So please vote. Clerk will record the vote.
What's the no?
A no vote says no. We go back to the original. If you vote no, we go back to the original motion, which was the staff's recommendation, and then we open it to the floor for discussion. So Ron said he wants to make another amendment, proposed amendment.
I'd like to make that before we vote on the final one, because it's an adjustment to the current.
Okay. This is strictly Mr. Leone's proposal, yes or no, up or down?
Is it yes or no?
Yep. There's no maybes on there. We're supposed to vote, right?
It's not my finger, I'll do it.
I'll poll the council.
I think you'll have to poll the council.
Councilmember Ames?
For some reason.
She's polling the council.
Go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Ames?
No.
Councilmember Patena?
No.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Carlott?
No.
Councilmember Leone?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
No. All right. Next one's requested speaker is Mr. Ames.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I got some material I want to read here, and then I will come to my motion. This is some background here. Theater Works has been operating for about six years in the theater in Old Town, built by the city and financed primarily through a $13 million bond that is being paid off by Peoria taxpayers. The arrangement with Theater Works was that they would pay a dollar a year rent plus utility costs to use the building, to put on theater productions and other events supported by ticket sales, grants, and donations. The theater ticket price includes a $1 surcharge to be used toward building maintenance, although I know we're contributing, is it $80,000 a year also toward maintenance, in addition to that $1 surcharge. They have not been able to cover their costs through ticket sales, grants, and donations, so they are asking the city, which means you, the taxpayer, to provide them $350,000 this year so they can continue putting on their productions and events. There are certain misconceptions here. It has been said that if Theater Works stops its productions because it can't meet its salary and other expenses, the theater will go dark. This is, in my opinion, not true, as the city's community services, its parks and recreation department, could utilize the building for many events, lectures, concerts, contracted theater productions, and other activities. They already operate our community center here in Old Town, our Rio Vista Recreation Center, our very major sports complex programs, and they sponsor or oversee many events, including major concerts, which occur in different locations throughout the city. So I don't see the theater going dark. Theater Works might leave, but the theater wouldn't go dark. And so this is an option for the city, as would be contracting with other providers of plays and events for the theater if Theater Works can't make a go of it. Also, it's been implied that the southern part of the city becomes a failure if we no longer have a theater in Old Town. I need to tell you, this is a great exaggeration and quite false. There's a lot of activity, improvement. You heard Councilman Rivera talk about improvement, family and neighborhood life, and enjoyment and many things going on in the southern part of the city, including the district I represent, the Palo Verde District, that will be the same with or without Theater Works or even any theater. To me, it's an insult to imply otherwise. Right now, the city is recommending a one-time infusion of funds to allow Theater Works to continue its productions and provide other venues spelled out in the arrangement being considered that would allow it to meet its annual operating costs. I have a concern that this infusion of funds from the city is a cost to all taxpayers, even though very few actually avail themselves of the entertainment Theater Works provides. Also, my observation at the plays, I do attend, I enjoy the plays, have been that many, if not most, of the patrons come from other jurisdictions, particularly the Sun Cities. Now, if the Theater Works was making all its expenses, that would be fine, but this means that when Theater Works asks for more money from the city, Peoria taxpayers are supporting non-residents because the ticket price they pay to attend doesn't cover the cost of production. The productions, now going a little more on the positive side, the productions Theater Works puts on are good quality, and they have been part of the city's identity that it is a municipality that supports culture and arts of different kinds, not just this kind, for its citizens. Also, if Theater Works receives backing from the city at this point, some backing, they will receive, I am told, a substantial gift from the Pfeiffer Foundation. As Theater Works is already on the ground and has demonstrated certain success, and this is where I would like to give my motion, it's been proposed that we give $200,000 right now, but that in September, we review how well the Theater Works is doing in terms of its revenues and bringing in more events. I think that's too soon. I think it needs to be at least six months. So we're looking at about December. So one part of my motion would be a change to the amended motion that we look at that in December. The other part would be, I'd like the city to work up Plan Bs, be prepared to start them, Plan Bs, that if Theater Works cannot demonstrate self-sufficiency, that we have to look elsewhere. So I want us to already be prepared to do that, look at Part Bs, we talked about monthly reviews, and be prepared to start them too, and they'd be reviewing the progress with the council. While Theater Works begins its new plans for programming, and I'm willing to vote for this, if it's six months, and also we have this other option, and the motion already spells out all the different things we want Theater Works to do, as Mr. Time presented. So they're already on the ground, and Theater Works can stay afloat for the next six months, so I'm looking at six months or so, to identify and start providing additional events and programs. Then if the council is convinced that Theater Works can become self-sufficient under its original contract, the council can consider and vote on a second infusion of $150,000. Best case would be that Theater Works is achieving self-sufficiency and the $150,000 is not needed. Intermediate case would be that if they got the additional infusion, they would achieve self-sufficiency. Worst-case would be that regardless of any additional funds, in the council's opinion, they will not attain self-sufficiency. In this last case, the council, in my opinion, would need to go to Plan B, such as turning the theater over to community services, which would bring events, lectures, concerts, theater productions, and other activities to taxpayers without additional infusion of dollars or some other options, and that's the Plan Bs that I'm talking about. So that's what I want to see, and I have a motion to need clarification of exactly what my motion is.
Yeah, would you go ahead and read your motion?
Yeah, my motion is the original amended motion, but changed to six months, rather than, it's looking at four months now to make a consideration about the additional $150,000. And it already was presented that the city was going to be reviewing and discussing, even said on a monthly basis, how successful Theater Works is being in terms of its new charge. But also, I would, and this would be part of something different to the motion, that the city would also be looking at other options so that the theater wouldn't go dark, and we'd have other uses related to culture and arts, but it could be a broader kind of thing. It's a theater we own, and we could use it for a lot of events. In fact, some events that we used to have there, we've taken to another theater, and we pay them to do it at another theater where we could do them here.
Okay. Would you back up one slide? So essentially, what you're saying is the $200,000, your motion is to give them the $200,000 to review them, and then in six months, decide whether or not to give them the $150,000, which would be December?
Whether or not, if needed, to give them the $150,000 if we felt they could become self-sufficient, but not if we felt they couldn't.
And to begin plans for what you're calling a Plan B, which would be their failure to perform.
Yeah, and I would like the city to already be discussing with us what those plans might be.
Okay. Is everybody clear on the motion? Can I have a second? Dice for last.
Okay.
We're back to the original motion, which is the one on the screen right now. And we do have a move and a second. This is $200,000 one-time available immediately, $150,000 one-time in '14, upon review by council beginning in October, budget amendment at that time if needed. Is that correct? Questions or comments on that? Oh, Mr. Patena.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of press the last couple of weeks about Theater Works, and I've had emails, I've had phone calls, I've talked with many citizens. The support for Theater Works has been overwhelmingly positive in favor of the city continuing support. When you look at the dollars that have been recently invested in downtown, and for example, Wagoner Plaza, I can't understand why we'd want to follow that up with closing a building right next door. It just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. And there have been a lot of things that have gone on in the last several years in the downtown area to improve it. And while they may be struggling, we've done things like streetscapes, we revamped Osuna Park, we've done curbs and gutters, there's a number of things that we've done to enhance and to beautify downtown. While the city mayor may not have an obligation to help Theater Works succeed, we do have an obligation to make sure, to our citizens, to make sure that we are good stewards of tax dollars, and I think that we do that. So if this motion passes, the motion from Councilmember Edwards, then I think that we're going to be watching Theater Works, you know, financially very closely, and that's something that we should do. In my opinion, along with the city assistance, Theater Works also has an obligation to effectively market their programs and their performances, to perhaps become more diverse in their types of programs they of programs they deliver, to take their show on the road more often to schools or communities that can support their requirements. I have met many people that I've talked with over the last several months that really, sadly, don't know who Theater Works is, and I hope that if this support that we give also is able to allow you to get the Piper Grant, that you spend money on marketing to make sure that people in Peoria and the surrounding West Valley, or all over this valley, know what Theater Works is and what they, the great things they can accomplish, and the great things that they're doing right now. There's also the responsibility of the citizens to try to support Theater Works however they can. If they see something that they like, then you should tell your neighbors, tell your friends about it. This is not a district issue, but it's rather a city issue, and the future of the Peoria Center of the Performing Arts will, in fact, affect the entire city. Having said that, I will support Councilmember Edwards' motion to, to support Theater Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leoni? You came up here, okay. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully, respectfully want to respond to Councilmember Patena. Support the downtown, support the theater. I'm not advocating for the building to go dark. What I'm advocating for is us having a sustainable plan within the theater. It might be with Theater Works, it might be with another organization, so the comment about, you know, support that, for the theater to go dark, I don't support that, I don't think anyone on the council does. My goal is having a sustainable theater, either with Theater Works, if that's not possible, someone else.
Thank you. I have no more requests to speak, last chance, questions or comments? This is, let me see, this is the reconsideration of a lease agreement amendment, Theater Works, and the recommend, the recommendation from staff, which we are going to vote on, is two hundred thousand, one time, available immediately, one fifty, one time, for fiscal fourteen. That'll be done with a budget amendment upon review by the council, October first meeting. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote.
I'm going to have to poll the council.
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember Edwards? Sorry, Councilmember Ames?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlat?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
No.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. So it is approved. Next up is twenty-four R, Youth Advisory Board Council Liaison.
John Sefton, Community Services Director, will make a brief presentation on this item.
You might want to wait for just a moment. I think the movie let out. I, I have a quick question for you. They're, they're asking me. The abstention is counted as a yes vote, is that correct? Yes, the abstention counted the majority side. Thank you. You're up.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. Tonight's, I'm very excited to bring this forward. As you know, Councilmember Edwards has encouraged a discussion on the concept of a youth advisory board member attending mayor and council meetings in an official capacity. I do want to recognize that we do have youth advisory board members in attendance tonight. I know the chair is here, Mr. Ian McMillan. There's Ian. And I also want to recognize the extra work that's been done by the community services department, the clerk's office, and the city attorney's office to help us put this together. It's one of the first in Arizona. Tonight's agenda item actually brings forward an ordinance and city council policy. The ordinance enables the youth advisory board member to serve as liaison and ex officio member of city council. The council policy articulates the why, the who, the how, and the when as to the process. Both documents have been included in your packets for review. Little bit of history, back in November of 2012, city council adopted the youth master plan, again, a first in Arizona. In April, we discussed this issue at study session, and on May fourteenth, the youth advisory board and city staff refined the elements of the proposed policy. Some of the highlights, our goal is to have a very positive experience for the youth advisory board member. We want to increase the opportunities for youth and civic engagement, which is a specific goal in the youth master plan. School remains a priority. I know it could be a good distraction to come here and not do the schoolwork, but we want this to be a strong goal. And we've done a very good job at outlining an application process and a mentoring opportunity for the youth member. The application process begins with a set of strong eligibility requirements for the youth advisory board member, many of which were created and suggested by the youth advisory board themselves. We'll have a formal written application process and, and a form for them to actually articulate the why they want to do this, how they can contribute to the, to the city overall. The process puts the youth advisory board as the first step in the selection process. A youth advisory, youth advisory board selection committee will be charged with naming three finalists that will be forwarded to the council, the city council subcommittee on policy and appointments. The subcommittee will then select a liaison and two alternates. Naming alternates, we believe, will help to give flexibility to the youth advisory board member, the liaison, and it also broadens the exposure of the program. So by having the three members actually be responsible for the content and their suggestions through the advisory liaison, will be a fundamental part of this program. The full council will have a full ten-day review opportunity, and the formal appointments will occur in an upcoming agenda. The mentoring piece is very important to the program. City staff, city manager's office will be available to the youth advisory board member, the liaison, and will coordinate with each of you the opportunities to connect with that youth advisory board member liaison as well. So with that, that's Ian. He's the chair of our youth advisory board. I'll be happy to respond to any questions or comments.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sefton, I want to thank you and your staff, along with the, the youth advisory group for coming up with this and helping me drive this through. I am, in talking with students from across not only Peoria, but the West Valley, because I am on the West Valley Youth Leadership Board as well, the common theme was, is that they wanted more civic engagement, and I think that this does that for them. It gives them a voice, it gives them, you know, they can take their ideas, they can bring them to us, they can look at the packets once we give it to them, they can take it back to their board members and, and find out which items, agenda items are important to them, that they may want to discuss with us as council members. So it gives them a true voice in local government, and this may inspire them to want to be a council member or even higher aspirations down the road. So again, I applaud you and your staff for, for the job well done.
Thank you.
And with that, can I make a motion to approve twenty-four R?
Please, the move is seconded, moved by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Carlat. Ms. Ames?
Yes, I'm looking at Ian here, he looks very deliberative. What's his view on the war in Syria? I just thought I'd put a little levity in.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, just for the record, the motion includes both items A and B.
Okay. Oh, okay, got it. This is twenty-four R, Youth Advisory Board Council Liaison, and includes two items, adopt the ordinance, and also adopt the council policy governing this. Why don't you just go ahead and poll the council?
Councilmember Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlat?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Next item is twenty-five R, fiscal year twenty-four, property tax levy.
Katie Gregory, our deputy director of finance, will make the presentation on this
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This presentation is on the adoption of the city's property tax levy for fiscal year 2014. Two weeks ago, the city council held a public hearing on property taxes, and as required by the state statute, we must wait two weeks from the public hearing to adopt the city's property tax levy for fiscal year 2014. As a quick summary, property taxes in Arizona are broken into two categories. The primary tax levy is used to support general government purposes, and the secondary levy is used to pay debt services, or debt service on general obligation bonds that are issued by the city. In calculating the tax levy, the total city valuation is multiplied by the tax rate to determine the total levy. As discussed during the budget sessions and at the public hearing, the city does not propose any changes to the city's property tax rate, maintaining the rate of a dollar forty-four per a hundred dollars assessed, and this is based on a nineteen cent primary tax and a dollar twenty-five secondary tax rate. This slide shows how we compare with our neighboring jurisdictions. We may see some of the changes in the upcoming year, we, but this is based upon the approved FY-13 tax rates, and again, Peoria is maintaining a dollar forty-four tax rate for the fiscal year fourteen budget. This is just a historical overview of property tax rates in Peoria, and again, the picture on the right shows how the average homeowner's tax bill is distributed, and as you can see, the city receives about thirteen percent of the total tax bill paid by our citizens. This slide shows the history of our property tax levies, and as you can see, we had a considerable reduction in our levy since its peak in 2010. And as you can see in this chart, in the growing years, as collections went up, we reduced our rates. And then, as you can see during the recession, as, as property values were going down, the city did opt to keep the rates the same, and as a result, we are collecting approximately ten million dollars less from our citizens through property taxes. This is showing a comparison from fiscal year thirteen to fiscal year fourteen, and the total levy for fiscal year fourteen is about fifteen point two million. This is a revenue reduction of almost one point two million over last year. So again, as you recall, the public hearing on the property tax levy was held on the fourth of June, tonight, on June eighteenth, is the final adoption of the levy, and this is the last step in the fiscal year fourteen budget process. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. This, do we have any questions before a resolution? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ames?
Yes, just to kind of mention it for our viewers, there's a, some, one of our property taxes is based on full evaluation, which really gets down to about eighty-five percent, and others unlimited valuation, and
Right.
Limited valuation is
The limited property value is, it's based on a statutory formula, and it cannot exceed the full cash value. And that's what we use to compute what was the primary rate, the nineteen cent tax rate, yes.
And then the secondary?
The secondary is based on what you might call market value, or based on, and that's what we use to, or what the county uses to compute the secondary tax rate.
And you did point out, because I think for a lot of people, even though valuations have dropped, the property taxes are going up, but that's other components of their property tax, such as the schools and special districts.
Exactly. So they may, for the city's portion of the property tax, we're collecting less, but other districts, and the school district, may have made adjustments to their rate in order to maintain their levy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Carlat?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you, Katie, and thank city staff. I mean, since 2006, we have decreased property taxes ten cents, decreased them ten million dollars over that period. In the good times, in the bad times, we have decreased the taxes that we collect from citizens, and yet, we have continued to maintain a balanced budget. I think it's commendable, and I think that it says a lot for who we are as a city and how much we value the citizens and their well-being and their quality of life in our city. I think it says a lot, and I'm very, very proud of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, this is twenty-five R, fiscal year 2014, property tax levy, discussion and action to approve the resolution and the ordinance, as well as declaring an emergency. Could I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Patena? Seconded by Mr. Ames. Questions or comments? Last chance. Go ahead and poll.
Councilmember Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlat?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Next item up is, thank you, next item up is twenty-six R, fiscal year 2014, streetlight and maintenance improvement district levies.
And Katie will do this one.
Thank you. This item is presented to council tonight as the adoption of the fiscal year fourteen levy for the streetlight improvement districts and the maintenance improvement districts that are throughout the city. Each year, the city provides Maricopa County with the total cost of maintaining and operating residential streetlights within subdivisions, as well as costs associated with residential retention basins that have been turned over to the city by, typically by HOAs for, for maintenance. There are two hundred and five streetlight improvement districts included in the fiscal year fourteen levy. This does include six newly activated districts. The number of maintenance improvement districts for fiscal year fourteen remains at eleven, and these primarily cover the cost of the electricity maintenance, replacement of residential streetlights, water, things like that. If we compare the levy from fiscal year 2013 to fiscal year 2014, we'll be collecting approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars more in total. The SLID changes, the streetlight improvement district changes are primarily from the addition of the six additional districts that we're taking on. In the mid, the changes are primarily related to the increases in the cost of utilities, in the water, servicing these retention basins, and the overall maintenance costs associated with keeping these retention basins well-maintained. So with that, you're asked to approve the ordinances that adopt the SLID and mid levies for fiscal year fourteen, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding those.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. This is twenty-six R, fiscal year 2014, streetlight and maintenance improvement district levies, and declaring an emergency. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second. Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Ms. Carlat. Would you please go ahead and poll the council?
Councilmember Ames?
Yes.
Councilmember Patena?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlat?
Yes.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yes.
Mayor Barrett?
Yes. Okay, that's, next item is call of the public on non-agenda items. I have one speaker, Michael Williams. Michael Williams? You have three minutes, clock's up there. I don't tolerate personal attacks.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. For the record, I've been looking forward to meeting you all. My name is Mike Williams. In addition to, at the Capitol, representing a number of interests, I represent the Arizona Police Association. I'm here tonight because I also represent the Peoria Police Officers Association. And originally, they wanted me to come and talk about the art center that you were considering, and I really felt it was more appropriate that we do this in the public comment session. I'm not going to rail against an art center. My daughter's into acting, she loves the arts, I've gone to see her plays a hundred times. But right now, we're at an impasse on a police, or we're not at an impasse, we're stuck in a police and fire negotiation, and all I would ask the councils to consider one thing. There's a lot of good things that you guys approved at the city. I grew up on the west side, I lived in Tolleson when I was in grade school, went to grade school and high school out here. One thing I would ask you to consider, though, is the constitution provides for one thing, for all forms of government, and that's to provide for the public safety. So as you're considering these things, and Council, Mayor, Councilmember Rivera stated it much better than I could have, and stole my thunder better than I could have, and stole my thunder, is you have a duty to provide for the public safety. And I hope as you're approving these extra expenditures, you will consider the fact we still have two contracts out there that have not been resolved, and they need to be resolved. And I hope that the council will be willing to listen to both sides as they try to work it out, and they pay attention to it, because that is what the Constitution provides for, and not that it's, well, actually, it is. Public safety is more important than all the other things that you all provide to make a community fun and worthwhile to live in, but you got to provide for the public safety first. That's what I came here to say. I look forward to meeting you all and working with you closely. Great improvements out here in the city of Peoria, and I look forward to working with you all in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or, I guess it's a public comment, no questions.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett and councilmembers. We have one brief presentation under my report, and that is from Brent Mattingly, our chief financial officer, and it has to do with our recent review of our bond rating by Fitch Rating Service.
Thank you, Carl. Recently, Fitch Rating Services reviewed their ratings on several of the city's outstanding bonds. As you know, the city's bonds are rated not only by Fitch Ratings, but by Moody's Investor Service, as well as Standard &amp; Poor's Rating Services. The bond ratings that Fitch reviewed included our general obligation bonds, our improvement district bonds, and the Vistanzia CFD bonds. Their review process, or what they call a surveillance process, is typically done every two or three years to determine whether the current ratings are still appropriate. The process involves notification from the rating agency that they're going to review certain bond ratings. The finance and budget staff then provide the rating agency with financial information that we believe is relevant to their rating review. We then answer any follow-up questions and provide any requested additional information. And then a conference call is held to discuss the city's financial status, the budget, the economy, revenue trends, development activity, and such. The rating agency then holds an internal company meeting and establishes the bond rating. And copies of the two Fitch rating reports were included in your council packet this Those rating reports provide information that supports how the city's ratings, bond ratings, were determined. And this slide lists some of the more significant positive and negative factors that Fitch ratings considered in arriving at their bond rating. They appreciate the city's financial management policies and the fact that the council follows those policies. They recognize that fund balances the city maintains. They're aware of the multiple steps that the council took over several years to reduce expenditures during the economic downturn. And they're starting to see that tax revenues and building activity may be getting a recovery. On the negative side, they recognize that cities in Arizona depend heavily on sales tax revenues, which are largely dependent upon how the economy is doing. And they clearly recognize the significant decline in assessed values from where they were at the height of the housing market. At the end of the process, Fitch Ratings affirmed the existing bond ratings, and here's a chart of our ratings from all three of the rating agencies. Sometimes we refer to this as our financial report card. These are all really excellent ratings that we're proud of, and I believe are testimony to the council's prudent financial decisions. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Has there been any change here, or are these the same as we had the previous time?
These are the same, unchanged.
Same, okay, we've maintained these. Basically, double A, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Which is very good.
My congratulations to you.
And that's all under my report.
Thank you very much. Next is reports from the city council. Mr. Leoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't have much today. I just want to mention that the first Thursday every month at First Start Church, it's on 83rd Avenue, 141, 85th North, 83rd Avenue, 8 o'clock, and until they empty all the food. You get free food there, you get vegetables, you get bread, you get pastry, anything you want. They have, you can bring your own box, or they have boxes there. So when I first started going down there to look at it, they only had about 100 people, but now they got almost 300 or 400 people, maybe 500 people, and it's just great. And if you need some groceries or food, first Thursday every month at 8 o'clock. The other thing I want to mention, every day at the library right over here, the main library, on Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m., they get movies for the kids. So if you want to get out of the heat and come into a cool place, they always have movies for the kids. That's also on Wednesdays at 12:00, the same thing, and on Fridays for teenagers at 1:00. So I think it's a good idea, if you want to get out of the heat with the kids, come on down and enjoy yourself. I just want to mention that I wish, I hope everybody had a great Father's Day. I know I did, and my kids took me out for breakfast, but as usual, I wound up paying. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carlet.
Thanks. I just have a few quick announcements. The first one is, the planning department has put out a website where people in Trilogy can get facts, updates, get hopefully real-time information regarding the Trilogy West zoning case, and they can go to the website, www.pioriaaz.gov/trilogiewest. Secondly, Lake Pleasant Parkway, as people in the northern part of the city at least know, is being expanded between West Wing Parkway, just north of Joe Maxx, and the 303. That road is going to be closed in the night times for four days, upcoming four days. Let's see if I've got this correct here. Sunday through Thursday, from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., that's Sunday, June 23rd, through the following Thursday. So you've got four days where, in the middle of the night, that's going to be closed. So if you're going to the lake, please be aware of that. You're going to have to take the 303 or another route. Oh, in addition, just one more thing. The Peoria Summer Splash at Terramar Park was held last Saturday. Over 1,100 residents came for that and enjoyed all of the things for kids to do. It was really nice. It was wonderful to have an event where people could come and just enjoy a nice, hot summer day with a lot of water, and it was free, completely free. So thanks to city staff for everything you did for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Wanted to congratulate Karina Russo for her recent promotion to assistant city manager. Though I've only worked with you for a short couple of months, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you, and I hope that we can continue that relationship. I actually took her on a tour of the Willow District last week, and I think it was a little bit of an eye-opener for her to see some of the unique things that the Willow District has to offer. So again, a congratulation on your promotion. And I also wanted to congratulate all those that were just elected or re-elected to the boards and commissions. It's a pleasure to have you on those boards, and we really appreciate the time and effort that you put in to make the city a better place to live. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Ames.
Yes. On Sunday, I had a chance to go to a grand opening. Brush fires, have you heard of that one? Yeah, it's in the, in the district I represent, Talaverty. It's kind of in the front of Lowe's off of Thunderbird and the 101 there. And they also, a month ago, opened up Dutch Bros, I guess they call it, rather than Dutch Brothers, which is a coffee drive-through. And it's really the same owners, and there's tons of people stopping there. I guess the Dutch Brothers, they took in, he said, 130,000 in money in one month at that Dutch Brothers. So we are getting businesses coming back, and it's good, and they've hired a lot of people. They hired some of their chefs away from some other more fancy places, I guess. I don't know how they did that. Brush fires, it's Mexican food, and they got various grades of heat, how hot it can be. I got the second highest. For me, it wasn't that hot, so next time I'll get the hottest. The other thing, about a month ago, I had a meeting with citizens in neighborhoods around 75 in Greenwood. D.R. Horton is putting in a development there, 75 in Greenwood, and the neighborhood felt that the lot sizes for that area were too small, 6,000, and they kept talking, about 50 of them at the meeting, we need 10,000. And the developers agreed, so that's excellent, so we'll be moving ahead with that development. It'll be a nice fill-in with homes that meet the sizes of homes that are already in that area, which is one of the things I look for when developers want to build more in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patana. Vice Mayor? Just two quick things. Mike John, I want to congratulate you, Karina. Congratulations. Overdue. Second thing is, on Saturday, I went to the 238th birthday celebration for the United States Army. They were doing it down there at the recruiting station at 94th and Northern. If you get a chance, go in and talk to those guys. They're pretty good guys. With that, we are adjourned from the Peoria City Council, and we are reconvening as a Vistanzia Community Facilities District Board. First up, would you please just note the role? Thanks. Well, first up is the consent agenda. There are items marked with a C, which is just the minutes. Could I have any motion?
So moved.
Moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Ms. Carlet. Go ahead and poll the board.
Board Member Ames. Board Member Ames.
Yes.
Board Member Patana.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rivero. Board Member Edwards.
Yes.
Board Member Carlot.
Yes.
Board Member Leoni.
Yes.
Chairperson Barrett.
Yes. Regular agenda, 31R, public hearing, district budget and tax levy for fiscal year 2014. This is a public hearing. An open public hearing. Would anyone care to comment on the district budget and tax levy for fiscal 2014? Since there's no line coming up to the, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. No actions required. Next is final budget and tax levy estimates for fiscal year 2014. Your honor.
Thank you, Chairman. The resolution, if approved this evening, will provide for adoption of the final budget in the amount of $28.5 million for the upcoming fiscal year, and it will set the tax rate for the district at the target amount of $2.10 for fiscal year 14, which is the same rate as in the prior years. It allows the staff to file the district budget and tax levy with the required agencies. Staff's recommending approval of the resolution before you this evening.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Rivero and seconded by Board Member Carlet. This is the final budget and tax levy estimates for fiscal year 2014. Please poll the board.
Board Member Ames.
Yes.
Board Member Patana.
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Rivero.
Yes.
Board Member Edwards.
Yes.
Board Member Carlot.
Yes.
Board Member Leoni.
Yes.
And Chairperson Barrett.
Yes. Call to the public on non-agenda items. I have those slips. We're adjourned.